Six o'clock, I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. They stand and join me with the next move. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. As to the republic which sustains.
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you. Okay, attendance, we have two commissioners joining us online. Commissioner Tragpey, Commissioner Heinsinger, and one Commissioner Sobelfield that has an excused absence. Thank you for being here tonight. Any agenda modifications at all?
No.
Okay, and announcements, proclamations, and presentations. We'd like to take a moment of silence to recognize the recent passing of former Inopah Fire Department interim chief Doug Dawson. Please join me in a brief moment of silence. Thank you for that, and thank you for your service, Chief Dawson. Okay, now next, we have oath of office for Fire Chief Ben Heeman. You want to come up and join me?
I would love to.
You have a flag?
Do you mind if I introduce my family?
Let's do that, it's alright. Thank you.
Everybody online, this is my son Lucas, my other son Grant, my daughter Ellison, and my wonderful wife Grace there at the end. So you guys could meet him in person. This is a special moment for me and this responsibility and this honor, and so just really wanted to make sure that they were here to see it.
That's nice to be the other half of the family, right?
The part that keeps us all together.
Yeah. But thank you for your support. Yeah, okay. Raise your great hand and repeat after me. I, Ben Heeman, solemnly swear.
I, Ben Heeman, solemnly swear.
To bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America.
To bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America.
The state of Washington and Inopah community.
State of Washington and the Inopah community.
I will uphold and support the mission, vision, and values of Inopah Fire Department.
I'll support the mission, vision, and values of Inopah Fire Department.
I promise to act with integrity and give my best in the discharge of the duties.
I promise to act with integrity, give my best in discharge of the duties.
Associated with the position of interim fire chief.
Associated with the position of interim fire chief.
I will also serve the community and the members of Inopah Fire Department.
I'll also serve the community and the members of Inopah Fire Department.
With professionalism and compassion.
With professionalism and compassion.
Hey, great, thank you. Chief Heeman's wife, Grace, will be pinning the badge on him tonight. One up.
Supposed to be operating cumbersome.
There we go.
Perfect. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Will we get a picture, guys? Sure. Chief Lumber, you got it?
Okay.
Alright, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Awesome.
Great. Chief Heeman, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I gotta make sure that, yeah. That's perfect. Thank you.
Congratulations, great, congratulations.
You guys can go up and up, alright. Nice to meet you guys.
Nice to meet you. Did you want to have a few words to say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, ladies, just real quick. Might be some nice things.
Okay. Yeah.
Uh, thank you.
Yes.
On behalf of Local Thirty-Nine Thirty-One, I'd like to extend our sincere congratulations to Ben Heeman. As he steps into this role of interim fire chief, this is a pivotal time for our agency and strong leadership is essential as we continue to grow, evolve, and meet the complex demands of the community we serve. Chief Heeman brings a wealth of knowledge and experience, steady presence, and a deep understanding of the unique challenges and opportunities within our organization. We're confident that his leadership will help guide the department forward in a way that reflects both operational excellence and a commitment to the well-being of our members. As a union, we value open dialogue, mutual respect, and collaborative problem solving. We look forward to continuing to work closely with Ben to strengthen the partnership between labor and leadership, and to ensure the voices of our membership remain part of the conversation as we take this agency to the next level. I'd like to take a moment to recognize and thank Chief Heeman's family, who stand beside him in this journey. Leadership in this profession doesn't come without sacrifice, and we know that the demands of this role affect not only the individual but the entire family. Your support makes the service possible, and you should be incredibly proud of the leader he is and the work that he has taken on. We are grateful for the strength and encouragement you give him behind the scenes. Congratulations, Ben, and look forward to the next chapter with collaboration, unity, and progress at the center of our efforts.
That's nice.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you, yes, too. These are the members of why I do that work here for these folks, and this is the reason why personally I did it, and couldn't do it without these guys, so appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
That's.
Anybody else like to say anything?
I'd just like to say congratulations, Chief Heeman, and, and again, thank you to all your family for all the support that you guys give our chief. It's a big job, takes a lot of time, so we appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Like to second that. Congratulations, Ben, what a beautiful family, we're here on a special night, so thank you very much.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Alright, we look forward to this immediate future. Thank you. Right. You guys are welcome to leave if you like. Thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you, everybody. Correspondence, I don't believe we have any. Okay, thank you. Next regular meeting is August twentieth, twenty twenty-five, at six P M. And public comment, no public comment tonight. Okay, consent agenda. Approval of minute meeting, meeting minutes. Approval of meeting minutes from June sixteen, twenty twenty-five, special meeting. Looking for board action to approve the June sixteen, twenty twenty-five special meeting, and the June twenty-fifth special meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five special meeting, and also to approve the meeting minutes from the June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five special meeting.
Great.
And I would second both of the motions. Yep.
And all, everybody approve?
Yes.
I, okay, thank you, so passed. Okay, approval of expenditures, approval of expenditure A, expenditure Exhibit A, twenty twenty-five general operating fund expenditure, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and ninety-three cents. Looking for board act, board action recommendation to approve twenty twenty-five expenditures from the general operating fund for six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and ninety-three cents as presented in Exhibit A.
I would make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five expenditures from the general, general operating fund for six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and ninety-three cents as presented.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, thank you, and I guess, yays to approve?
Yay.
Yay.
Thank you, so passed. Meeting reports, finance committee, Commissioner Heinsinger, Chair, and Commissioner Sobelfield, you have any report today?
Uh, no report today, we did not hold our finance committee, uh, at this time, just due to unavailability.
Okay, thank you. Okay, financials, staff balances. As of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, general operating fund of five million, nine hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Capital outlay fund of three million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-six cents. And the impact fee reserve fund, two million, four thousand, four thousand, four hundred thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and nineteen cents. Okay, and financial report with Laura Buckley. There we go.
Um, alright, we'll start with the twenty twenty-five operating fund, monthly revenues. In the month of June, we brought in two hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Um, little bit less than May, mostly due to property taxes, but more than previous June's, by quite a bit. Uh, breakdown of that, uh, we've received in fifty-four percent of our property tax levy. Uh, and other taxes are just refunds or discounts given by the county, maybe leasehold tax, but those are small, they usually net to the negative there. Uh, we've received in the majority of the BLS and M I H allocation fund money, um, just have Q three and Q four to bill out for that. And then the core services, so we should get the full four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars by the end of the year from King County. Um, permits are trending on average for what's to expect now that burn permits are closed, but we still have the expo center ones. Uh, fire marshal services, that's been billed out in full. Uh, BLS transport service is up again for through Q two, we're at two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. And G E M T is still trending a little bit down, it's at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Investment interest, we've, uh, already received in what we budgeted for the year, a little bit more actually, a hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three. And we did have the sale of the surplus for five thousand, so that's a new line that went in there. Um, in the month of June, we also did receive in the King County Fire Protection uh, service invoice for the properties in King County that aren't assessed property tax, which is why you see the sixty-seven thousand down there. Uh, year-to-date through Q two, we've received in five million, two hundred and one thousand and six dollars. Um, on all of the slides that I'm doing for all of the funds, I projected out year-end estimates based off of the data that I have both, um, from historical data and then what's been received to find trends. So with regards to revenue, we are on track to come in about two hundred thousand dollars more than was projected. Um, we'll get into a little bit more of the detail later, but it has a lot to do with the investment interest that we've been earning. We've been carrying a higher balance, and the interest rates have been very good. And, um, the BLS transport service and the G E M T, they're kind of offsetting one another right now. Uh, revenue comparison for Q two, uh, this is just through Q two of the last five years, so we're at five million, two hundred and one thousand, two hundred and sixteen. Last year, we had received in four, a little bit over four point seven million dollars at this time. Current property tax revenue, so this is, uh, property tax revenue assessed and levy for this calendar year. We brought in sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars, so a little bit more than this time last year. And the breakdown of this, um, I think it's kind of a good visual. So in twenty twenty-five, our total allowable levy for twenty twenty-five is the seven million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and six dollars. As of June thirtieth, we've received in three point eight eight million dollars of that, so it's fifty-three point four percent of the current year levy. We've also received in fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and eight dollars in delinquent taxes. But year-to-date, as of June thirtieth, we've received in three million, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. Um, with the historic trends, the lower box have been on our screen in the finance reports throughout this year. It shows historically that in any current tax levy year, we're receiving on average about ninety-seven point ninety-eight percent of the current year levy. But we're also receiving in delinquent taxes from the year before. Um, so taking in the formula for what we'll receive for this year and what I anticipate that we'll receive in delinquent taxes, we'll end up receiving in about ninety-nine percent, just shy of that, of what we had budgeted to receive in revenue for total property tax.
Great, great job.
Nice.
See, and then moving on to transport revenue, this is, uh, total transport revenue received in seventy-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars in June, which is slightly down, while twelve thousand dollars over last year, um, significantly up over the last couple of months, so. And then this is again is the combined, um, year-to-date, we're at four hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars total revenue for both BLS and for G E M T. Transport revenue, which is down slightly from last year, the year before. Uh, Q two G E M T alone, where we've received in a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, uh, which is twelve thousand dollars below what was received this time in twenty twenty-four, and significantly less than the three years before that. Um, let's see here. We did receive a generic email from Systems Design West earlier this week that was addressing G E M T in suburban and rural areas. Um, it wasn't addressed specifically to us, but it was to all of their clients, letting them know that people in certain areas, while it hasn't been implemented, they were giving us forewarning that effective October first, we would see a decline of about three percent in the G E M T money that was going to be issued. We're still waiting a follow-up on that to see how impactful that would be, or how likely they believe it would be, but it was enough for them to send the email out to their customers. Um, we've already seen a three percent decline this year, just since, you know, without any change in the program. I'm not sure if it has to do with the customer base, if it's due to the billing cycle, um, but we are trying to research to see what impact that would have on us, if any, moving forward, so. Um, I did take that into consideration though, when I was forecasting out the revenues for the rest of the year.
And Laura, that, that decrease is spurred by the federal government, or what, what is?
Um, it wasn't a freeze, it was basically saying that in the G E M T program, uh, they keep extending or renewing something that has to do with the amount of money that can be billed and collected through that program, and they keep threatening to shut it down, but then every eleventh hour, they keep renewing it. But they did have a hard date of October first in this email, and so, and we responded and asked them for a little bit more information, so hopefully we'll get that, and I can bring back what we find out.
Right, and that'll affect next year's budget.
It'll affect next year's budget, and it could inadvertently affect this year's as well, um, because we are seeing a decline in the receipts on those, uh, initially, we are still receiving the money. Um, so I'm not sure if they're just kind of getting stacked up or backed up, or maybe we just don't have as much of a customer base. But the BLS transport is on trend from last year, just the regular BLS transport. So this one's about five hundred thousand dollars less than it was this time last year. Um, but we've brought in over five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the BLS transport last year. Um, so right now, we budgeted four hundred thousand for the G E M T and four seventy for the BLS transport. I anticipate, I go back to the screen here. Anticipate we're gonna finish the year with the BLS transport of just shy of five sixty, five hundred and sixty thousand. That three hundred and sixty thousand for the G E M T, that is including what I believe we'll receive in October for our prior year settlement. Um, so while it's four hundred thousand, or, not four hundred thousand, forty thousand less than what we had budgeted, the BLS transport service is gonna be, you know, about, what, thirty, ninety thousand dollars more than that, so they're going to offset one another. Um, we might have to do some adjustments in next year's budget if it continues on that trend, but at least we are getting the revenue from the BLS transport service to help income for that.
It's hard to forecast how the transport's.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Um, but if there really is gonna be a lot of uncertainty around the G E M T, we should probably build that into our model.
That's something here, but, yeah. Couple meetings ago, you know, we talked about G E M T stability of it, and so there was some discussion with the commissioners about counting that in the budget, I think we need to look at that more, we just got that email from Systems Design, so we really haven't been able to dig into it, but it might be wise to almost look at like G E M T money in next year's budget, almost like, okay, if we get this amount in, then we can either make this purchase or move some money to like capital, because it, it, there is so much uncertainty, you know, right?
Yeah.
Money that.
Yeah. Consider extra money.
Yeah, it's a lot of money, you don't wanna not count on it, or not, you know, account for it, but just really tracking that and saying, okay, how stable is that? And maybe it'll be more stable, maybe it won't, but it's really, we're getting the BLS transport that's staying strong, so it's not a lack of transports by any means, it's what the federal government is, you know, potentially what they're gonna continue to do, so.
Yeah.
Just something to look at as we work on the budget for twenty-six.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then moving on to, uh, general fund or operating fund monthly expenditures, um, monthly expenditures for June were six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, ninety-five dollars. Pretty much even with June of twenty twenty-four, and about eleven thousand dollars more than last month in May. Uh, comparison through Q two of the prior years, we are up about three hundred and eighty, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in expenses through Q two of twenty twenty-four at three million, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and nine dollars. And in the breakout here, we've got all of our balances here through Q two, I did a lot of work on the year-end estimates, taking into account, uh, information that I received from program managers regarding one-time purchases that would occur later in the year that wouldn't be reflected in Q one or Q two. Um, and then taking, taking into account a lot of cost savings that we have realized, either intentionally or just through making different moves. Um, you know, the Puget Sound Executive Services contract, we paid for Q one and Q two, we're not paying for Q three and Q four. Um, so those are budgeted items, um. I kind of, I was very intentional in going through and trying to make sure that I'm, was identifying anything that would be expensed later in the year, um, going through all of that, including the cost savings that we received, which included, um, significant savings through the training consortium, just due to instructor credits that we've received, either through the training captain or some of the specialty discipline instructors. Um, there were some significant savings that were budgeted for that won't be realized. Um, I'm pretty confident that we will finish the year with expenses at eight point four million, right around there, uh, which would be ninety-one point two percent of our budget. Through Q two, we were at forty-two point five percent, and that's that same number we saw on the previous screen, the three million, nine hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and nine.
Awesome, thank you, Laura.
You're welcome. Uh, overtime comparison, in June, we were luckily down from May, fifty, fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars in total overtimes. Um, up from prior years, but we have had a lot of lead coverage and a lot of training exercises. Uh, and the, what, the chart here on the left is the annual overtime comparison, so the years twenty-one through twenty-four, that was the total overtime for the entire year. Um, right now, through twenty twenty-five, we're at two hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. Um, so second quarter comparison, this time last year, we were at a hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars in overtime expenses. While we are significantly up in overtime, we did reduce the overtime budget from years prior, um, as one of the cost-saving measures when we were doing twenty twenty-five budgeting, and I still feel confident that we will come in under what was budgeted overall.
We were pretty over-budgeted prior years.
Quite over-budgeted, yeah. Uh, which I think, uh, added a lot to that budget surplus that people were seeing just for uncertainties, but using some formulas that we derived, we were, I believe, able to come up with a pretty solid way to calculate for uncertainties, and worst-case scenarios, because it kind of seems like we're experiencing some of them right now, um, but I think that we will still come in under the overtime budget at the end of the year.
Okay.
And here's a breakdown of the different overtime types and where we were at, I left the Q one column up there, just to see the comparison where we were at, so through Q one, we had spent eighty-two thousand or a little bit over that in all overtime. Um, through Q two, we're at that two hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. I took the same formulas or forecasting through the end of the year for known events, for event events, for leave coverage, um, anything that we kind of predetermined to be experienced later in the year. Given all of that, I believe we should end the year at four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars, or approximately within that range, which still would be eighty-six percent of the total overtime budgeted. Hopefully that is the case. And then the, uh, operating fund balance summary. Uh, through Q two, so we started the year with four million, five hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars in the general fund, which was a mix of the unassigned and then the three committed funds. Um, year-to-date, we have added one million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars to our general fund balance, or a Q two ending fund balance of five million, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that is broken out with the two lighter blue right below it, we have five million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and four in the unassigned, and then five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars in the three committed fund balances, which are then reflected below that. And the, in the prior screens where I had expenditures, um, I was able to calculate out lead cash outs, anything that would happen later in the year, um, that would be realized, and attributed those to the different fund balances. So I estimate that we will end the year six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars over what we started twenty, what we budgeted for twenty twenty-five. Um, with a total ending fund balance of four million, six hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars, and we had budgeted to the one on the left. We had budgeted to go down to four million, thirty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-three. Um, the, again, the kind of mid-color blue below that, four million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-six would be part of the unassigned, and our committed fund balance is going to drop below what was budgeted for the year due to unforeseen separations and cash outs through that compensated absence liability. Um, so that is something that we should address, um, when we get closer to the year. That four hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-two, that is the true number, that will be the committed fund balance for sure. Um, and we had budgeted to go to five forty-three. So we'll want to reassess that, um, especially the compensated absence liability, that's one of the big ones that auditors are, want to make sure that we have funded appropriately.
Yeah.
And cash balance comparison, we ended June in the general fund with five million, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. That is our highest June cash balance to date. And are there any questions on the general operating fund?
So, thank you.
And I'll have Chief Heeman go through the expenses on the capital fund, um, this is a little bit updated, as you know, because we have the uh, fire impact fees have their own funds now, so we'll see that one after the capital fund. The only two revenues that we have in the capital fund are investment interest earnings and then our transfer, annual transfer in from the operating fund. Um, to date, we've received in ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars in to the, well, I should consider it investment earnings, we've actually received in ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars. That transfer in was also transferred out on the next screen, so it's a wash. Um, I do estimate year-end, taking into account the current interest rates and what we received, that we will receive in a hundred and seventy thousand, a little bit more than that in investment interest in the capital fund, and then we'll do our transfer in from the operating fund of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in December. Um, so we should see total net, um, revenue for the capital fund, just a little bit over four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And here is the capital fund summary for expenses.
On the capital fund, we have a few things. The the V C N, we probably won't see any more purchases for that as well going down, so that'll be locked up here soon. The eight cars are all done. There might be some ancillary um charges to those accounts. Extrication tools, I foresee that we had that in the budget a couple of years ago for the second set. We didn't end up purchasing it, so. Goal is to get that purchase this year, finish that up for our second set of extrication tools. Um we had, we had the two engines in the capital budget. We'll go with one, but we're not gonna be paying for those engines this year, but we have it in the budget. As far as equipment, the things that were in the capital expenditure, some of them like the SBA fill station. If we don't have to do that, we're not gonna do it. The it was put in the budget um this last year based on the replacement schedule that was in our plan. And when we were doing the budget, we didn't have enough time to, you know, look at it and get a bunch of evaluations done to determine that we didn't need to, but. Um recent servicing on it, looks like our SBA fill station will be good for a while. So again, if we don't need to buy something and it's not something that uh needs to be purchased, we're gonna be pushing those off. DPHIPS, we had DPHIPS in the capital uh fund as well for replacement. Part of that was due to the replacement schedule, but also uncertainty with King County and their requirements of what the DPHIPS needed to do. So there's still some uncertainty of what the best one is, and again, if we don't need to buy those DPHIPS, our our current DPHIPS are working. Um some people have upgraded their DPHIPS, so they, there's extra F R three parts in availability. So that is a plus for us as well. But again, having a plan for the number of DPHIPS we have, when we need to buy them, that's not a cheap expense and. Um you know, when we're looking at our capital plan, we're updating that. Those are some of those things that we might tweak, so.
Here, so uh through Q two, total expenditures, including the transfer out to this uh special impact fee reserve fund. Are at three million three hundred and seventy seven thousand two hundred and four dollars. I don't anticipate those will go up too much, um except for the expenses he referenced, the extrication tools. And uh possibly some more P P E and ballistic vests. Um and what P P E vans and the.
Tick.
Tick, yeah.
Just a few things that we'll still be purchasing that we know we're gonna have to buy, but so much work right now has been for. Upfitting and getting the eight cars in service, specing the engine. Um there's only so much time in the day, so. Again, look to have some of those larger equipment purchases locked up before the end of the year.
Awesome.
And then looking at the balance fund summary, um. We have had a change in fund balance where we've spent out three million two hundred and seventy seven thousand nine hundred and ninety one dollars. We have an ending fund balance of three million four hundred and forty two thousand five hundred and seventy three dollars. Um I anticipate with our interest earnings and those expenses that we um. Hope to have occur this year within the budget. Um the ending fund balance should um be at three million five hundred and sixty two thousand two hundred and forty six dollars. So it will be up from what was budgeted, mainly because that, what he said, the engine, some of those things are gonna be pushed out and off the expense this year. Which is good because the interest rates are high, so the higher balance we can carry, the more you can have our money work for us. And then special revenue fund summary, I just do this all on one sheet. There really isn't much in there. Uh we budgeted to receive in sixty thousand dollars in fire impact fees. We are already at thirty eight thousand one hundred and thirty dollars in uh fire impact fees received for this year through Q two. Uh that's the actual revenue received. We've actually received word from the city of Inumqua. Haven't received the payment for April or May. Um but those two together are about seventy five thousand dollars for those two months. There's been so many uh new construction permits. Um so I feel like it is a very fair estimate that even if the second half of the year slows down a little bit, or it stays on trend with prior years. Um just those two months that we had uh that we haven't received the revenue or check yet for for um May and April. Yeah.
The numbers we know that are out.
Yeah, that are there. I expect to receive in probably a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in impact fees this year. Um investment interest earnings, those will increase the more money that we carry in there. Um to date, we've received in forty four thousand seven hundred and seventy two dollars. That does include. Part of the money that was transferred out of capital into the special revenue fund. I had accounted for it originally as one transfer in, but I did wanna record it in the software as interest earned, so. Um that that number there also includes the portion that was transferred out of the capital fund into this fund uh that was attributed to the interest. And then we had the transfer in from the capital outlet of two million three hundred and forty two thousand six hundred dollars. Um the administrative overhead is just banking fees with King County, and then that transfer out, that was the me. Transferring some in and some out early when we didn't have, hadn't completed the transfer, because I wasn't sure if we would get like. Charged from the county if we didn't have any money in the reserve account, so I moved some in, moved some right back out. Um beginning balance for the year was zero. Uh we have added two million four hundred and twenty four thousand three hundred and sixty three dollars. And that is also the ending fund balance for the special revenue fund.
Awesome.
That is everything. There's any questions?
Uh I'd just like to say thank you, Laura, again for all that work on all that uh. Uh why I'm spacing the name of those funds, but. Impact fees, all the impact fee work, yeah.
This is very transparent and easy to follow, so thank you for all your hard work.
I'll jump in here real quick. There's, there's a lot of data in here and looking at the information in different ways, and so we're really trying to. Look at things, see anomalies, really get a good idea of what our regular reoccurring operating costs are and as we grow, so. We, we welcome feedback, you know, if this is too much data, you know, we need that feedback, but also really just trying to look at different things that. We haven't been able to see before and um we only have so much time to keep going down different rabbit hole, but I think it's very important to. To see where our expenses are, see where we can track, and then it helps us to budget for the next year. Okay, what? What was our year over year expenses in there and where the anomalies are at, so we can budget better for that, so it's. It's a, it's a lot of information, but I think it's good information, and so um please, we welcome feedback, but also, you know. The whole goal is to have transparency, understand what our budget is, what, what we have to work with, but also what our needs are potentially in the future, and then. How do we, how do we account appropriately when we wanna increase staffing or do certain purchases? How do we do that? Or if we need to go out to the community for a separate revenue source, truly why do we need it? Now, what's our projections? Because we have to be good stewards of the, the equipment and the facilities we have, and so we need to take care of them, and how do we get ahead of that? That's why we have a replacement schedule. Um doing a lot to work on that, update it, so. We don't have such a long lead, but also not so short that we're just replacing a perfectly good apparatus.
Well, I'm very fortunate in the fact that we get to, we have the ability to push out some of these purchases because, you know. We, we do have a couple of years left or a year left in side equipment.
Nice work.
Yeah, thank you. Chief Paimon, you have, we have your chief report.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next.
Okay, she's got a lot of information here. I'll try to go quick. Um some good information I wanna share, both A units are now in service. This is a picture from Saturday noon. Appreciate all the work that the crews did, fire cutter nap, our fleet program manager. Uh shops helping us get that, but it's been a big lift. Um we got one unit in service earlier and then um this last one, four forty one is in service, so. Appreciate all the work that was done. Um it'll provide more reliability and stability for our A units, for our aging units, so we'll be. Working on surplus in those two older units that will be um sold here in the near future. Um department update and looking ahead memo. I sent this out to the commissioners. It's a memo that I had sent to the, the organization. And just wanted to share with the commissioners and the community, you know. Um the vision and where I see things and where I think that we're succeeding and what we're working on, and so. Uh just wanted to bring it up here, the one that I'm excited to fill this position and I'm, I'm humbled by it and. Appreciate the support and the collaboration with President Haddock and the support by the commissioners, and. So it's, it's an honor to do this and I look forward to this, but also um now that we know what we're not doing, you know, we're not looking at any other agencies right now and we're working together. It's, it's time to start getting things done and, and the commissioners took action and made me interim fire chief. Uh July first. Um also in the memo that Laura was gonna be our finance and HR director starting July first. Um I also uh appointed uh B C Madill as interim deputy chief. Um that I talked to both B C Madill and B C Blumer. Um I need that support. We need that support, and it's not them stopping their, their current roles. Chief Madill will be continuing those roles of fire marshal, doing those responsibilities and doing that part with the city. But also some things that we need to keep that D C spot filled. This is not ideal to have in the interim. And why he's also doing the other things, but it's important and it's a, it's a big thing, and I appreciate the support of the local and both chiefs willing to step in if needed, so. Um also the, what our goals are and what we're working on, what we're not gonna spend money on, you know, just purchasing one engine or specking that out. Uh putting out the training prop until we get our capital facilities planned. Just really um saying what we're working on and what we, where we positions we need to fill. Um the goal is to fill the D C spot permanently, and I wanna do that as soon as we can. Um. I've said this before, it's wonderful that um I feel we need to fill it. It's wonderful that the commissioners feel that that needs to be filled in as well as the local. And I hope I'm not speaking for the local this part, but it's just. We're all working together and knowing the value of that. There's other things that we need to do as well, so just. Uh really grateful for the organization we have. We have great people. We've accomplished a lot and what we're gonna work towards in the next year, so just, that's why I put it in there.
Okay.
Wanted to make sure the commissioners saw it and saw the great work that our members have done. Another thing that's in there is um Laura mentioned in the budget, and you see this with the overtime. Overtime's not a bad thing. But there's been a lot of overtime because we have to fill staffing vacancies of short and long term with disabilities or injuries. Um family leave, uh but also for training. Uh we don't have multiple stations that can cover. There's, we're investing in our members. There's. Members that wanna get additional training to help our community out, and we need to invest in that area, and so I don't look at this overtime as a bad thing. It's just we wanna make sure we have a good idea of how much we need to allocate now that we're at five person staffing, now that we have some B Cs. And just really looking at that, so.
Overtime, I always have some high risk to cover here with.
Exactly. And the nice thing that, you know, Laura touched on is instructors. Uh we have a, we have a lot of talented instructors that are tapped by the consortium, and so we get a partial credit for that. Um that's, that's been huge for help offsetting some of our training costs as well, so. Um if we didn't have instructors that had that passion, that had those K S As, those skills and abilities, we would see that expense even higher, so. Uh and that's not a one for one, but it, it is to recognize that it's, it's mutually beneficial, and I wanna keep doing that. I think it benefits the organization as well as the community to do that. Um and we'll keep doing that as long as it's within our budget and it keeps paying off that way, and it's, it's our way to get back to a lot of other things that we get out of the training sort of. Um another thing is we're gonna start contract negotiations. I'm looking forward to that in this role and uh doing that with the local and. Going a little different route with that, so just looking forward to it. We'll be given the updates here in the near future, so that'll be kicking off here at the end of the month. Um working on department policies, new policies, updates to current policies. Again, there's a lot of work on that. Um we're getting some headway on it. Always takes longer, you know, than uh you want, but this is where those things, Chief Madill, he's already started, stepped in and helped out with those, and. He wanted to be here today, but he had a pre-planned vacation. I think it's important that he does that. Uh but you'll be seeing more information coming from him and uh just in the few days that he and I had the opportunity to work together, it was. It was nice to be able to not turn things off, but as things came up, hand, pass things off to him that I knew that he could handle. Um that'll either be better customer service for our internal members or the community or some project that needs to get done, so. In addition to those other duties, you'll be seeing more of him. Um we also uh we've been doing a lot of planning for fourth of July. Uh we'll go into that more in the next uh couple of slides, but also King County Fair. Those are some big lists for the organization, so a lot of work goes into that. Um the twenty three, twenty four audit, that has been a huge lift, uh predominantly with Laura in addition to the other things that she's doing, but also, you know, with Erin and myself. Uh making sure that we provide all the documentation. Going through an audit's not fun, even when you do everything right, and but it's the part that I take out of it is when I got to meet with them is. What can we learn from it even before they find stuff or before they complete it? What can we learn from it? What can we implement and make sure that we're doing the best we can, and so. Um even if it comes out perfect and it looks good, no recommendations or findings, there's still things that we're already taking away from and what we can do better to take care of the organization. Um I'm working on a, a policy right now for paying benefits, benefits for non-represented employees, just so it's clear, okay. Non-local members, this is what a baseline that they would get and how they take vacation, and. As we hire this uh next position, we wanna make sure that we have policies in place. Again, the auditors wanna just make sure we're following the rules and again, we've, we've been fortunate to not have any issues with it, but again, as we go forward, get bigger. We wanna make sure we have some basic policies in play that help all the different members of the organization. Um this other one on here is supporting Puget Sound Fire with the recent death of Captain Brandon Miniman. Um it was a medical uh line of duty death, uh that's, I think that's the right term on it. And it's been very hard on the organization, the fire service. Um. We want, we get so much from Puget Sound. We've had a lot of help from them and other agencies, and so we're just gonna try to meet Puget Sound where they need. Assistance that Inumqua Fire can help out with. Uh not gonna go into it too much, that their organization's hurting. And it could be any of our organizations. This is a young captain that was two young, young kids, and we just wanna support Puget Sound, and so just. The reason I bring this up is that we're firefighter family. We need to do things to take care of each other. Be healthy here at work, um but also we never know when we're gonna need help from another organization. We get a lot of help from other organizations, so. Uh we're, I'm grateful for our members that are willing to help out and help Puget Sound right now. Um but it's just, it's a nice to work together and have that trust and just wanna bring that up, but it also. How, how dangerous this job is, the exposures that we're all exposed to, and what we need to do to continue to improve that. Um so just wanted to touch on that. Um we also, Chief Madill assisted uh Valley Regional Fire Authority with their promotional process for assistant fire marshal. Uh they do a lot for us, and so it was nice that he was able to help them with that process. And then also in department staffing, wanna let the organization and the board know that we have two personnel and operations on extended leave for various types of leave. Uh we have a third one that'll be on leave here shortly as well, so um. We've consistently over the months uh had two to three personnel on leave, and so that impacts our overtime. But thankfully that uh we've budgeted for that, but there could be times that it could exceed it, and. The commissioners have said, you know, if we need to do a budget amendment, we can, and right now, and you saw Laura's report that we're gonna be good. Um also wanted to make sure it's clear that we have an interim deputy chief, Chief Kevin Madill. Uh finance and HR director Laura Buckley, and then uh we did a lot of work looking at what Erin's been doing. She's been stepping up, doing more in this past six months. With the one vacancy we had, we looked at the, the job functions that need to be done that we're not doing. And her willingness to step up, and so we've made her an administrative specialist. Uh we appreciate that, and uh so that took effect July first as well, so it's. We're really trying to cut some wood on what we need to do, stability. There's a lot of things that were paused. Um but also making sure we're making moves that are within the budget, and then um. Laura's gonna go into more on the H R general spot, but you know, just working on film that, so I don't wanna take that away from you. Thanks for the problem with that, so. A lot going on with uh different positions. Department training, landing zone training, the crew's been doing that, a rescue swimmer initial training and quarterly hose drills. Uh show you that's a, that's not a training building that we're in. It's the expo center, and so we're grateful that they allow us to use their structure. The crews get very creative with using structures to train into, to try simulate going through a building and having obstacles, so I'm grateful that they do that there. Also committee involvement. Uh we have to start the stripes parade July fourth. We had an apparatus go through that, and then uh the King County Fair, we're gonna have an aid station there multiple days. Um starting Thursday. Starting Thursday uh through Sunday, so that's, that's a big lift. Appreciate the members stepping up and doing that so that we can have staffing. It is a large uh group of people that come into the community, so again, we have an aid station there, so when there's aid calls at the fair that it doesn't. It helps not take a call or put calls on the station that are already responding calls. And then we got National Night Out against crime on the fifth. Um recognition. Chief Dawson here. He was interim fire chief multiple times. This is a great picture of him and. Um again, I appreciate the board doing a moment of silence, just recognizing. And again, I appreciate the board doing a moment of silence, just recognizing the service that he had, not just here, but in other fire ser-, uh, fire departments. So great picture of him there. And also we got this letter, this card from a person that did a ride along with B ship. Just again, can't see it all, but just someone taking the time to do that. We get a lot of this and just really want to share with the community as well as the commissioners that we're grateful for the great work that the firefighters do, they represent this organization well. And just the different ways that they are themselves, they work hard and it's recognized by the public. So it's, it's very cool to see. So noteworthy incidents, we had a river rescue that the crews were able to with a bunch of other agencies, a lot of other agencies. There's two stranded kayakers, there was no injuries there, there was an industrial accident in Black Diamond that our crews assisted with and helped out with. Residential fire we had in town. And then we did, airline provided transport for an injured biker during a triathlon. So some of the noteworthy calls will go into fourth of July here shortly. And this is for June twenty twenty five. These reports are usually the month prior, but we will talk on July fourth a little bit here. Trying, trying to provide some different ways to look at some incident data with, that we have time to provide with the tools that we have. And here's a comparison so far year to date incidents. So, you know, halfway through the year and we're almost halfway, you know, with the calls that we've had the year prior. So just trying to look at incidents compared to the years prior. Here we're breaking it down by apparatus, a little bit more information. In our firm, firm staffing is five and that is three on the engine and two on the aid car. But we also have another aid car that is sometimes cross staffed as well as sometimes hard staffed on certain days. And then we have a battalion chief of battalion three forty one, which is, it's not hard staff, but it's Monday to Thursday from seven AM to five PM. And so they're not staffed 24 hours a day, but just really looking at calls, how many calls we're getting and getting in per apparatus for last month and year to date. Uh, this is a unique one to look at, but the engine and the calls it gets by hour. It doesn't show zero, it just shows the hours that the engine had calls. So I'm really, I'm going to start showing more information on this in the busy times. The crews can tell you when the busy times are, but this just helps show from the month prior, the number of calls and the time of day that we got it. Same thing here, aid car, A three forty one goes on a lot of calls. Again, this is a time of day, you can see there's similar similarities as well. Just another way to look at the data. And then A four forty one, I brought this in, I looked at it. It includes if the engine was cross staffed or when it's hard staffed. So when it's cross staffed, this is their call, this is the one because our, the crews are logging in. They're doing a great job logging our rigs in, so we start pulling good data on this. And it just shows again that the similarities of when they're getting calls for aid calls. And battalion three forty one, a lot less calls, but again, this unit is not staffed 24 hours a day. You know, three sixty five is forty hours a week during the day. And there's other responsibilities and training and out of service time and meetings. So really just starting to capture this. Then on July fourth, we staffed at 24 hours, so we'll start seeing some more incidents for July and when we look back tomorrow. Monthly call volume comparison, again, what we had, two hundred and twenty two in June. Just a little up from the month before. Concurrent calls, again, this is a big thing that we look at, the crews feel it. And we had thirty nine in June, so a little bit less. But one of the things that I'll touch on here in a little bit, it has to do with St. Elizabeth and where this becomes even more of a big deal. EMS calls up predominantly of what our crews go on year to date, nine hundred and eighty eight EMS calls, but we do get a lot of other different types of calls. This is just showing that info a little bit different way. Transport's down a little bit. Again, we don't get to say when a patient needs to be transported. But one of the things that we're looking at here is St. Elizabeth's CT is down and it could be down for multiple weeks. And so we have to, you know, lean on other agencies in addition to our aid crews and TRIMED. And so we may see a dip here in the July numbers that could reflect in this area. This, this does impact B L S revenue, not that we do it for that, but just again, letting the board know that when CT is down at a hospital, that's a big impact to our organization because it's longer transport times, we're going to another hospital or we need to lean on another, either agency or private ambulance. Any questions before I go to the deputy chief report? Deputy chief report, Chief Madill put this together before he left. Some pre-incident planning for July fourth, that took a lot of time. We, like I said, we did upstaff, grateful for that because with the leave that we had on shifts, we also upstaffed and the members were able to do that and on July fourth, that's a big deal. So battalion three forty one was staffed 24 hours. That day, engine three forty one, A three forty one, and then we had another aid car put in service that cross staffed with the brush rated. So that was very helpful. We had thirteen calls for service that day. Chief Madill looked at five related to, looks like four likely caused by fireworks, five fire related incidents. But again, we don't have to have a lot of fires or even small fires to be very, very busy. And the crews did stay very busy, but they did a great job. Little historical screenshot of what our calls were from years prior on July fourth. Four thousand attendees approximately for the Stars and Stripes Parade. And Chief Madill is working with PD planning for that. Again, he won a plan for it, hoping nothing happens and so that we work well with them, that's a great blessing. And again, getting invited to be able to do that is really cool. Upcoming events, King County Fair, like I mentioned, is starting this week. The Rotary Street Fair will be doing that. We'll have in a booth out there, the Scottish Highland Games, and then National Night Out. You'll see, you know, Pop Fire participating in that on August fifth. Lot of info?
Yeah, great.
Any questions?
Thank you, thank you, all three of you for your reports. Local thirty nine, thirty one, you, you're good? Thank you, yeah, absolutely. Executive, except closed session, we don't have one of those today, and unfinished business. Fire commissioner vacancy. Do you want to speak on it?
Sure, we have received one application for the position number four vacancy. And it is open, it's still to receive applications until August sixth. And then we'll be doing interviews tentatively at the commissioners meeting on August twentieth.
Okay, thank you. I again, encourage anybody that wants to apply and potentially sit in on a term. Appreciate it. Okay. Fire admin positions, Laura Buckley.
Chief, Chief Hammond had spoken on it before. There were, Erin's position has been reclassified with additional duties. Calling out some of the titles or responsibilities that we have written in existing department policies, but there hadn't been somebody clearly identified as their role. There are things that Erin was typically doing anyway, so now we've commemorated that. Added in a few other items that she had been doing previously throughout the year, just to kind of, we did an assessment of what all needs to be done in administration now that we have direction on where to go. Took all those roles and responsibilities. A lot of those were added into Erin's job description. And so it was reclassified as the administrative specialist. And then we have the human resource generalist, which will be mostly assisting with policies, procedures, benefits, payroll, compliance, and it's going to have a lot of that piece of it in there. So more of the financial and administrative with Erin and then the human resources piece and payroll in this new hu- human resources journalist. That job posting closed this morning at eight AM. I'm still accepting resumes and cover letters, but they won't be considered unless we don't hire somebody from this first round of interviews. The job was posted on our website through Indeed and on governmentjobs.com. I received in over a hundred resumes. So I will be going through those. We are going to do ten interviews on Tuesday, July twenty ninth, will be conducted here. And was able to procure one of the HR analysts that works for Puget Sound. She's going to sit on our interview board, so have her here with us. She interviewed with Puget Sound as a human resources generalist. So it'd be really nice to have her here to kind of give her feedback on, on what that's like. And I think that, oh yeah, and then we are aiming for a September first start date. So hopefully we can hire somebody out of this first round of interviews on the twenty ninth, put them through background and have them start right after Labor Day.
Great. Thank you, Erin, for stepping up and in on responsibility, appreciate that. We're basically kind of pulling their bootstraps up these days, all hands on deck, thank you. And Laura Buckley, for the St. Auditers Office.
Yes, so the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four audit is ongoing. They had very mighty hopes of starting this in July and finishing it in July. And it looks like it might happen. I have a couple more items that I need to get them, but for the most part, all the data's been submitted, we've been going through their reviews. We're just buttoning up a few things, we have weekly check-ins on Tuesdays. I'll be gone tomorrow and Friday on vacation, but I should have the rest of the two remaining items that they need from me completed on Monday or Tuesday. And then get that submitted and then they'll put their report together. But it has been going very, very fast. So yeah, I'm very hopeful that we really do get it done this month because just checking off the box.
Well, I imagine that's a testament to how organized you are and being able to turn around that innovation professionally.
And it saves the department a lot of money, yeah. It's huge.
Getting it done in a month cuts the cost in half. Great, so we're going for it.
Thank you. Okay, new business, I have none, public comments, we have none. Anything pretty good in the order by anybody?
I have one more question regarding commissioner vacancy. When do we do the, want to get like a panel together to work on the questions? Do you want me to submit questions that we've done in the past or you want me to work with you on them?
Well, I know I've sat through some of these panels in the past and let's start with what we have. Take a look at it and kind of put our notes together, see if that seems appropriate still.
True.
Yeah. I don't know if we need a whole like committee on this, but.
Okay, I'll look at some of the questions.
See if what we have is still appropriate time wise. I know the other was kind of during COVID and maybe some things have changed a little bit.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else good in the order?
I just like, if I could just throw in a thanks for everybody, all you guys are doing the work, I appreciate it.
I deserve it.
Okay, well, with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Second, okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thanks you guys.
Yeah, good night, thank you.
Have a great night, thank you, bye bye.
Yep, you as well, see y'all.